Mr. Faber.
Good evening, everyone. The executive session in the Wayne Board of Education, March 7, 2024, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Ellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting forth date time and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Convenience Act. A roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Dr. Toback.
Okay, so before I get started, just a quick reminder for the public that although we are at Town Hall, this is a public work session meeting, which has a little bit of a different format compared to our usual meetings that we have here at Town Hall. They're a little more casual, a little more conversational nature, and it does not include a recognition program, although I did want to take a moment to congratulate a few of our student groups. First of all, I want to congratulate the Wayne Hills SDA, Team Maroon, Team White, and their advisor, Ms. Kinnler, for putting on what was an absolutely incredible show. I know many of our board members were also in attendance. Wow, that's the only word that comes to mind. I also wanted to thank the Wayne Hills Project Graduation Committee and the PTO for inviting me to the senior fashion show. Congratulations to the class of 2024. And also finally, thank you to my kindergarten friends at JFK and Fallon for inviting me for storytime. So tonight, we have a presentation about the progress that we're making toward our goals, as well as our first important discussion about the 2425 budget. I will also be providing the community with the Student Safety Data System Report, also known as SSDS. This meeting is also our last Board of Education meeting before March 12, the day of the referendum vote. So I would like to just take a few minutes discussing the referendum. Over the past few weeks, we've spent quite a bit of time engaged in a debate about the referendum throughout the community, but the community debate has been sidetracked by a few other issues that detract from the main issue: disputes about future enrollment numbers, concerns about existing maintenance programs, and a host of other comments or a diversion from the real issues facing the community. A referendum is a complicated thing. There's a lot to know, but at this point, anything that can help simplify things is beneficial. So here's my attempt at simplification. When you break it down into the simplest elements, a referendum is really about five things. First, student and staff safety. In 2015, the school district was forward-thinking in proposing a safety and security referendum that failed narrowly. In 2015, the community was not aware of what security vestibules can do to protect students and staff because they just weren't as prevalent. Nine years have passed, and now vestibules are a standard feature in schools across the country. Partner Alliance for Safer Schools, K-12 Guidelines Note Secure Entry Vestibules are a Tier One security measure because they are crucial for establishing effective access control strategies, which can include locking devices and visitor monitoring protocols. This organization considers vestibules as baseline protection for students and staff. Half of our schools do not have this baseline level of protection. Also, our elevators, both of our high schools, do not allow for EMS access. That means if there is a medical crisis, the elevators cannot be used by EMS teams. Also, our bleachers are six years old. When child already fell through a gap, new bleachers will meet current safety codes and will protect from people or objects falling through. The second element of the referendum is really related to our changing community. The referendum is about adapting to change, which is not always easily easy to do, especially when changes affect the entire community. That's much harder. Change is coming to Wayne in the form of high-density housing, and the community is going to grow. With that will come new students, and an approved referendum is the only way that the Board has to accommodate the many new students who will be enrolled in our schools in the next few years. While a proposal for a new school is not new, I think that the community has now had time to think about what it means if there is no new school, no addition to Preakness. Parents know how full our elementary schools are, and they now understand how that would influence our favorable class sizes that we enjoy today and why redistricting would be an important part of how the district responds in the event of a failed referendum. The referendum is also about maintaining what we have. Every educational dollar is precious, and the most important thing that we preserve when we go through the budget process is those educational dollars. Our schools were all built at the same time period, and they age at the same rate, which means it should be no surprise that there are some common problems happening at the same time. Basic work, like roof repairs, window replacements, and boiler replacements, are the bulk of the work proposed in this referendum, and it helps us maintain what we have and keep all of our buildings in service. The more funding that we have to use for facility maintenance and repair, especially when you have a 2% cap, that means there's going to be less funding for education. Fourth element, funding. The big issue for the Board has always been reducing costs as much as possible and moving ahead with this essential work. The Board has done everything that it can to reduce the impact of the referendum by selecting projects that bring state aid, and they've spent months selecting projects that are needs and not wants. There has been a suggestion that if the Board of Education reduced the referendum to $100 million, voters would find a reduced referendum helpful. First of all, there's no guarantees in a future referendum, and I would like all voters to think about what that really means. It means that the state aid to the community would also be reduced, and it would also mean that there is about $70 million worth of work that would be 100% paid for by taxpayers. And finally, number five, investing in the next generation. That's what the referendum is about. The proposed referendum is about investing in the next generation and creating an environment where they can thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. This referendum will enable us to maintain the educational expectations of our community and provide safe and healthy teaching and learning spaces that foster creativity and innovation. So just a quick reminder that all district schools will be closed on the day of the referendum, March 12, so please remember to vote. If you did not get your sample ballot in the mail and do not know where to vote, you can go to the district's website, wainschools.com, and click on the Wayne Township Public School Bond Referendum link. Okay, so at this point, what I'm going to do is I have to go into a required report, which is, as I mentioned, the SSDS, or the Student Safety Data System. Okay, so this is the semi-annual report under NJSA 18A 17-46 of incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse offenses and harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which took place in our schools during the period September 1, 2023, through December 31, 2023. So pursuant to statute, I'm required to report to the Board of Education two times per year at a public meeting all acts of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying which occurred during the previous reporting period. Tonight, I'm reporting the following incidents that took place during Period 1, as reported to the New Jersey Department of Education through the SSDS. The SSDS replaces the former Electronic Violence and Vandalism Reporting System. It also requires each school district to report more and different data than in the past. For example, all HIB investigations, both alleged and confirmed, must now be reported. In addition, all removals, like suspensions for disciplinary reasons, must be reported for both general education and special education students. So the numbers being reported may appear higher in some instances than the totals reported in prior years. For that reason, it is tough to draw conclusions on any increases in reported totals due to the state requiring more information under the new system. Our schools continue to maintain an excellent record of investigation, documenting, reporting, and handling incidents in a timely and efficient manner. For reporting Period 1 throughout the district, there were incidents in total, reported eight incidents of violence, three incidents of vandalism, zero weapons offenses, eight incidents of substance abuse, 104 general code of conduct incidents, which led to educational removal, and 21 confirmed incidents of HIB out of a total of 65 that were investigated. The 21 confirmed HIB cases involve the categories including race, seven, ancestry, ethnicity, and national origin, one, religion, two, gender, zero, orientation or identity, three, power imbalance, two, disability, one, and other, five distinguishing characteristics. Cases were investigated by the school-level anti-bullying specialists with guidance and support by principals and the district anti-bullying coordinator. Consequences and remediation efforts for offending students included individual counseling, student and parent conferences, discipline in accordance with the district code of conduct, and remedial measures for targeted students, including counseling, support services, parent conferences, schedule changes, stay-away agreements, teacher aides and monitors during the school day, adult-student pairings, and other monitoring measures. In addition, each school has instituted programming, including the district-wide initiative, No Place for Hate, intended to reduce bullying and improve school climate. So also, with the HIB report for this particular period, there were 16 incidents of HIB that were investigated since my last report, and three of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of actual HIB incidents. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to get started with the mid-year goal report. Mrs. Reichman and I will be completing that report.
Dr. Toback, can we move the banners so the board members can?
Okay, so to get started, I would like to take a moment to talk about this report. First of all, it is a required report. Somewhere around the halfway point of the school year, we're required to report on our district goals. But I would like to also mention, particularly because we have some new board members, the unique nature of the district goal system that we have. Ultimately, the district goals that we've put in play over the past years have led to a number of significant enhancements for the district. At this point, there's probably over 50 goals that we've established in my time here, and each of those goals includes some really major accomplishments for the district. So some of it includes full-day kindergarten, some of it is our high school block scheduling, a lot of technology upgrades, modernization projects, a whole host of things that have led to our district being a better place to teach, a better place to learn. And so it's really, this system has meant a lot for the district. It's based on good change management. That's the reality of it. Good change management, planning, making sure your budget matches with whatever initiatives you have, and then assigning people to carry out different parts of that goal. Okay, so why don't we get started with our first goal? Goal one is schools for the class of 2038. And so this is the referendum, right? Basically, what we're looking at is what kind of schools do we have now, what kind of schools will we need in the future? And what we've also concluded is that in a lot of ways, the schools that we have now are not the schools we need for now, right? There's a lot of things, there's a lot of improvements that we've included in the referendum, and so we know that we're almost at the end of this goal, right? The vote for the referendum will be on March 12, and during that time period, we've done a tremendous amount of work. You've seen all of the public relations work that's been done. You've seen our podcast. You've seen a host of other things. Also, you can see we've been very active in making presentations. First of all, the community forum, which is really a nice opportunity for members of the community to hear directly from the professionals who've been working on this referendum for the last few years, as well as board members and administration. We've made presentation to our township realtors, faculty at each of the schools, parent coffee events, PTO council meetings, two of them, the Pakinak Community Clubhouse meeting, Wayne Adult Community Center, and also our other methods of communicating. You can see on the right, our YouTube videos, our podcasts, which we've been catching on, and press releases, and a variety of letters to the community that have been released over the past few weeks. So we're almost there, and March 12 is a big day. Be sure to vote.
Goal number two is the implementation of our learning management system. This is an extension of large committee that looked at digital platforms during the 2023 school year. During COVID, we had to deliver online instruction and had to make a lot of changes. Now we're committed to maintaining those digital platforms. We learned that there are many benefits to the resources provided. Students have access at all times. Parents can go in and see what students are learning in their classrooms. If the teacher's out, it gives them an opportunity to record classes, interact and engage with the student. If a teacher knows they have to go to a professional development training, if they have a child who's sick and they know they'll be out the next day, there are so many ways that they can load up their classroom and just make sure that they maintain continuity of instruction. Canvas was what was selected by the committee. It is really the leader in the industry, the most popular in the country. Colleges and now high schools, middle schools, and even elementary schools are using learning management systems. So we have committed ourselves to a really smooth rollout and been working closely, I see Rob sitting here, with the WTAA. This week, we've been meeting regularly, but we said we're going to have weekly check-ins because we want to make sure that we provide the teachers ongoing support. So it started with, we have a team of Canvas lead teachers from the middle and high schools. They engaged in nine learning sessions with a dedicated Canvas trainer through the company and also with Tracy Lee, our supervisor of educational technology. Our administrators participated in Canvas for school administrators. Dr. Toback and I have been participating in our own user group so that we could be there to support the teacher. So we've become very proficient and want to show them that we are using it as well. We have our assistive technology team. They participated recently in an accessibility Canvas workshop. We have meetings regularly with the Canvas trainer, the WEA president, the supervisor of ed technology, and teacher trainers, just to learn about all the engagement tools. We have weekly check-ins so that the teachers have tasks that they can do, and they have access to an integration specialist. Now we are offering turnkey trainings facilitated by our teachers, because there's nothing better than teachers learning from their peers. And we have an upcoming February 7 PD Day, where we'll continue to offer professional development. The plan is, some of you may be thinking, you know, what happens as new teachers join our staff during the summer? We are going to have bootcamps running throughout the summer, and we offer an opportunity for any teacher who would like to facilitate workshops from home, online, to invite a minimum of five teachers to join them, and they would be paid for their time, as we typically do with the Wayne Township Learning Center model. Goal number three is our youth mental health support goal. We know that the needs for providing mental health support increased significantly during the pandemic. We had lots of COVID relief funds available to us that we were able to use to bring in additional counselors. We know that those funds are expiring and wanted to make sure that we built capacity within our staff and our students. So as a large part of this goal, we offered mental health first aid training to staff members so that they could have the knowledge and the experience and training to work with students who are experiencing mental health challenges, and we are training students so that they can assist peers and just detect when a peer may be experiencing some mental health challenges and know who it is that they should reach out to and how they can best support their peers in their grade. Did I, oh no, there we go. So to date, we have 30 staff members that participated in the youth mental health first aid training. We now have trained more than 120 staff members. We're really proud of that. Five staff members were certified as turnkey trainers. We'll continue to expand those opportunities throughout the district. We have a collaboration with the Passaic County Mental Health Association and the Passaic County Department of Human Health Services. At no cost, we can offer additional training to the district. The Wayne Valley Counseling Department is currently training all juniors to be teen mental health certified. JCK Foundation will deliver a presentation soon to our 11th graders at Wayne Hills with a focus on improving mental health and resilience amongst youth. And we have a partnership with NJ4S in Passaic County so students can be referred to them, and we continue to maintain a smaller contract with Tri-County Behavioral Health. Many of our students and families have benefited from their services. This next goal was part two of our special education goal, continuation from last year, and our MTSS goal. MTSS is a multi-tiered system of student supports. You know, we're always looking to meet students where they are at and make sure that every student's needs are being met in the classroom. We're training all of our teachers to provide small group and targeted intervention to students as they see they need it. So every day, we're assessing and gathering student data and then providing them small group instruction so that along the way, if they're finding any challenges with any concepts, we make sure that we get them caught up and we provide additional reinforcements. For the special education goal, we have brought back our consultant from last year, and she has visited classrooms. Let me bring you so you can see exactly what she has done. She made school visits to look at her in-class resource programs. We implemented an identification matrices, and that was something, a recommendation from the prior needs assessment. This way, we're assessing every student who goes through the IRRS process fairly and the same way, and we have measures in place before classifying them, because the MTSS is a goal and is training that we're providing to meet students where they are at in the classroom. We brought in coaches to teach the teachers these specific techniques and show them how to assess and how to manage the rest of the class and what this actually looks like in a classroom environment so that you're working with small groups, but also maximizing the learning time for all the students in the class. We have developed and implemented a behavior hub. That's a tiered behavior resource module. There are students who have difficulty self-regulating their behaviors. Again, this is not training that a general education classroom teacher necessarily has, so we're boosting capacity and providing this training so that we're better equipped as a whole to meet student needs in the classroom. We are hiring an additional board-certified behavior analysis, that's a BCBA, to help us with behavior interventions in the classroom. I know that you all know, and we're very proud of our partnership with Montclair State University and the Department of Labor for a Power-to-Teacher apprenticeship program. We have someone enrolled right now. This was a year to go through a pilot with the Department of Labor. We have a follow-up meeting with them next week and just determine compensation and what type of support we would like to offer anyone in the program as they pursue this continuing education. And the MTSS training has continued. We have second-grade teachers being coached, and we provided an introduction to our fourth and fifth-grade teachers, and that'll continue next year. After next year, all of our teachers will have had training. The next goal is the profile of a graduate. We had 60 of our teachers. We had parents. We had administrators. Stakeholders from all areas participate in this committee, and the goal this year was to develop a graduate profile for students for graduating high school and then middle school and elementary. We were able to come together and develop one logo with six core competencies that we thought should embody all students as they graduate from fifth grade, they graduate from eighth grade, and as they graduate from high school. I included with your packets tonight some of the collateral that we developed, and we have a sample of a retractable banner that we could make available to all schools. So there you see the six core competencies. What I included is, I think you also have the posters. Each of the posters shows what a student would be thinking about when they consider each of these competencies. The work would continue next year. We'd have a second part of the goal, and we'll start framing that out now. And the second part would be to develop profile projects that students would complete, most likely at the end of third grade, at the end of fifth grade, at the end of eighth grade, and while they're in high school. We had Ramsey, we have a principal in town who is an administrator in the Ramsey School District. He was able to share a portfolio of, I'm sorry, he's a resident in town in our Randall Carter section. His son will be entering our school district, but he's a principal in Ramsey. He was able to share a lot of samples from the work that they've done, and we have also been able to gather from some other places. But it was nice to be able to involve someone who lives in the community and has great success with this work in the district where he's working. So we will form a new committee and involve teachers who would like to participate in this work, and so that'll be the next step. Dr. Toback, I think you want to report on this next goal.
So then to wrap up this presentation, what I'd like to do is talk about Goal Six, which was a goal that was added a little later in the process, and it was in response to some of the behaviors we were seeing throughout the district at the end of the year last year especially. So bullying prevention and education. So this particular goal was something that started out with just discussions with guidance counselors to collect information to find out where it is that bullying incidents were taking place, collecting more information, recommendations, and strategies. And also, one of the big components of the program was to develop educational programs. One of the real issues that we found last year was there was a lot of situations that were conflict that were identified as cases of HIB, or at least originally there were claims. And so that ups the number of cases that you have. It ups the number of investigations that you have to conduct, but more education about what is actual HIB compared to conflict is something that was really important. So you can see here, counselors from across the district designed three presentations focused on bullying prevention, social media awareness, and emotional regulation. The presentation was designed to be modified for student, staff, and family viewing, and so those are in the possession of all the counselors across the district. They've made their way to, at this point, and they're available to all parents and guardians, and our newsletter, actually tomorrow, is going to have a new way of distributing the information. There's a QR code, so it's very easy to get to these resources. Presentations will also be made available at the schools with handouts, and principals and professional school counselors communicate proactively with parents to de-escalate conflict and offer support. So with fewer cases that we're experiencing this year, that's good news. The principals and the counselors have a lot more time to communicate and be proactive with a lot of these cases. And the district continues to work with outside agencies, as Mrs. Reichman was pointing out, and the goal for this year was to reduce the norm cases by at least 10%. At this point, we're tracking with a 38% decrease as of right now. So that's great news. We're well ahead of pace in terms of meeting this goal, and that concludes our presentation. Board members, do you have any questions or anything you'd like to discuss?
Questions? Thank you. There's a lot of work goes into these goals by a lot of people, and there's countless hours that go into these goals and achieving them. And kudos to you, Dr. Toback, and you, Mrs. Reichman, for leading this. I will tell you, you'll get pushback on Canvas. Google Classroom, some people like it better, but having worked in Google Classroom, in Blackboard, and Canvas, they all have their ups and downs. But we'll get there. Over time, you'll get there. It's just amazing when you sit back and we get away from all the minutia and see really what's what's happening in this district. It's amazing because too often we forget that the key reason we're all here: education. And I made this comment to you the other day when I was talking to you. In almost two and a half, three months, when did we talk about education? So, and education is part of the referendum. That's education too, but I'll talk about that later. Thank you. And thank you for everyone who took part in achieving these goals.
Thank you.
I'll provide an update on the budget. Last Thursday, we received our state aid figures from the Department of Education, and as reported in the newspapers, it has been increased of about $1.8 million, a little over that. As this is good news, it is subject to change due to the governor's budget negotiations with the state senate and assembly, usually occurring in June. We will continue to finalize the tentative budget using that state aid figure. The Department of Education previously released guidance for the 2024-2025 budget year covering the electronic submission and the budget details and processing changes. The state loaded the state aid information into that software, and we will continue to enter revenue and appropriation as required. Once our tentative budget is complete, it will be submitted to the Department of Education Passaic County Office by March 22nd for review. As far as the district, what we've done, we've reviewed all school and department budgets, and we continue to modify requests to currently close the gap that exists between appropriations and revenue. In regard to planning information, we've been monitoring the current year's budget revenue and appropriation projections for 2023, 2024 to confirm our base budget, specifically using and considering next year's needs on not only the appropriation side but the revenue, the big ticket items that we're tangling with at this time. First, had to do with the state and federal grant funds that have run out. We've currently spent through all the money that has been provided by the federal and state as it related to our pandemic. But we did focus on identifying those expenses, grant funds as well as general funds, as we addressed lingering issues for students from that pandemic. Second, we looked at the salary counts, just a quick calculation, a little over 3% increases generally across all of our salary counts. Our payroll is about $109 million a year. You calculate that out, it's about a $3.8 million push for salary counts generally. Third, we looked at a significantly increasing special ed costs, again, related to the pandemic and residual impacts to students' learning. With that comes the transportation costs related to rising special education out of district placements as well as support services. That, we started with about $360,000 before reductions. And the last area that was a significant concern for us to, while we crafted our budget, had to do with healthcare costs, which is estimated to be around a 12% increase from year to year, which represents about $3.7 million. Again, that's all the appropriation side, and the budget gap is between the two. So the revenue side, again, the budget cliff hit, and that is basically what I talked about on the appropriation side, which the revenue portion, which is the grant funds, we no longer have. We spent through them according to plan and as approved, not only by the Department of Education, it's also outlined in our audits over the years. Again, that represents the budget cliff. So we had to identify some of those with the idea that we would not be able to move forward with them, but we had to make a prioritized review based on need. Second area had to do with the tax levy increase. As you know, it's a 2% increase on our existing tax levy. That's roughly about a $3.3 million increase. We also had the previously mentioned increase in state aid. As far as bank cap, which is unused taxing authority from previous budgets, we do not have any available within our budget to utilize for this year's budget. We do have with existing projections for student enrollment that will generate an increase or an adjustment to tax levy of roughly $183,000. And the increased healthcare cost adjustment also generates through this budget and is available, $616,000 is available as a revenue source. Specifically looking at the procedures and specific timelines that we have, tonight is the first public input on the budget. You can, anyone interested to speak tonight can talk at the podium for agenda items. It is on the agenda as a PWS item, which will be completed next meeting and voted on by the board. And second input is on that March, second March meeting. The actual budget as finalized and entered into the Department of Education software is due to the county office, I would say March 22nd, again, due for approval and review of the county office. Their last day to review and approve to the district is April 19th. At that point, the approval has been placed, and we can then advertise for the general public and in the newspapers with the idea that a more detailed presentation will be provided at the budget hearing, which is currently scheduled for May 2nd, 2024. That concludes my portion, and I think the superintendent wanted to make some comments.
What I was hoping to do is just spend a few minutes talking to the board about some of the realities that we're facing this year with the budget. So this year, like every year, there are different challenges, and there's different things that we need to overcome in developing a budget. And as Mr. Moffett said, our COVID funding has run out. All the federal funding that we receive for COVID is no longer available to us. So this is a problem in districts across the country, but there's also, there's more to it. It would be very nice if we were in a situation where we could say, hey, you know what, the COVID funding is running out, but some of the issues related to COVID are also over, so it all kind of comes to an end at the same time. But that's not what's happening. And so that's a new challenge, another unprecedented thing that we're facing. So I'd just like to talk about, like I said, some of the realities of what the district is facing when it comes to increased costs and why there's a lot of pressure on our budget this year. So it's no secret to everybody that there is a teacher shortage, and the teacher shortage continues, right? It is really not improving. And honestly, our approach to filling vacancies we have is we've been basically taking veteran teachers from other school districts, which does not make me popular when I go to administrative meetings, when I attend the county roundtable, because we have been taking teachers from districts all across this area. We've added some excellent staff members to the district, and I don't mind because in the end, we fill our classrooms, we have excellent teachers that we've been able to hire, but that comes at a price, right? It comes at a price because no one, generally speaking, is willing to leave a position doing the same job and willing to be paid less. And so that's where the difference is. We're hiring teachers instead of hiring recent college grads or people maybe with some experience. We have to hire veteran teachers if we're going to fill our classrooms. What that means is there's a trickle-down effect. The trickle effect is that at the end of the year, when there's something called breakage, right, basically the effect of hiring a new teacher after a veteran teacher leaves, so you used to be able to hire a new teacher at maybe $50,000 to $60,000. For a veteran teacher that's leaving at $120,000, your breakage is that difference, right? That's $60,000 or so. And if that happens a bunch of times, you have 30 people retire, you can imagine how that adds up very quickly. And that's really one of the things that funded what we've been doing with surplus. We've been building our surplus, we've been building our different reserve accounts for maintenance and for facility work. That is much harder to do now when you're hiring people at a much higher salary. There's other things that don't follow the budget either because there's increased expenses. We used to have, for example, long-term leave replacements. That was kind of a group of employees that came to the district, and these were generally speaking, recent college grads or maybe teachers who were really interested in working in the Wayne Township Public Schools. So the fact is, they would be willing to come to the district at a reduced rate or step on the salary guide, and they'd be willing to work in place of a teacher who has left, right? And so the teacher that leaves and maybe is on, you know, medical leave or maternity leave or something like that would be replaced for that time period. But now, we're in a situation where we don't have any of these people. There are very few long-term replacements that we can hire. So what we do is we wind up paying additional stipends to the staff that we have. So we pay six periods. That is an expensive proposition. And so that's another thing that's facing, that we're facing as a district in dealing with that. So we do have a significant increase in salaries across all of our bargaining units. That includes additional stipends and other forms of compensation, but one of the areas that has really increased is our six-period payments, over $1 million this year. We also, as Mr. Moffett said, we expect a significant increase in health insurance, which in some cases, it exceeds for all the bargaining units, really what our maximum tax levy would be. Another thing I wanted to talk about, and I know that I made a comment the other day regarding the increased state aid. So we do have one positive thing, and that is that we have a significant increase in state aid, most of it dedicated for special education. But in this district, what we're facing is a $4 million increase in cost on top of already significant budget for special education, which is something that we will ultimately have to find the money to fund. But we've had a number of pandemic-related costs related to extreme behaviors. We've had also a situation where we've had about seven students move into the district this year who were out of district placements in their prior district. They moved into the community, so we have to now place those students in out-of-district placements. And we've also, we have a number of students that have significant needs medically. So we have students that require catheterization, we have a number of students with severe blood disorders, we have a number of students who have feeding tubes and they require round-the-clock medical attention, so we have to have nurses for those students, both in school and on buses. So these are the types of things we're talking about. These are important things that we have to do to support these students, but it comes at a cost. In addition to that, there's also the staffing that goes with that, right? So in addition to all the other staffing needs that we have. The other thing is that, yes, just to talk quickly about our reserves. So for those of you who are new board members, for the past 10 years, we have worked very hard to build our reserves. Our reserves have really, that's been the thing that has funded most of our capital projects. So for example, we have renovated 10 science labs at our high schools, right? Brand-new to completely renovated science labs. You know about the turf fields at both of our high schools, there's all kinds of things. This current round of projects that we're doing is the TD, Tunis partial roof replacement, Ryerson partial roof replacement, APT partial roof replacement, and the Preakness envelope. That adds up to around $7 million. The Preakness envelope is very important because if the referendum were to fail, we want that building ready to go, and we have to be able to, even though it's a small building, we would be able to accept students there. It could become a very small elementary school. But our capital reserve is something that, you know, like I said, that with the ROD grants has allowed us to really make a lot of progress with a lot of the maintenance work or capital work around the district. We're also concerned about our fund balance at the end of the year. So because of all these different things that are affecting our budget now, in a lot of cases, we would have a fund balance in the neighborhood of $4 million, $5 million that we would be able to deposit in these different reserve accounts. This year, we're looking at about maybe $2.5 million. That's where we stand right now. That's our rough estimate of what we hope to have by the end of the year. So I guess that's basically, I guess I just wanted to provide the board with a little bit more about why we have some of the things that we're facing. Mr. Moffett did a very good job of describing the numbers and some of the issues. I just thought that would be helpful for all of you to understand sort of the reality behind some of these things.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Moffett, Dr. Toback? For the board, what we're going to try to do is set up small group sessions with Dr. Toback and Mr. Moffett at the board building. So if you do have any questions or concerns, we sit down in small groups and we just, we sit down, we'll have small group sessions concerning, and especially for the new board members, to better educate you on the budget and how, when you see it, where everything is. Because it's very confusing, because sometimes you're going to see a revenue and an expense, and they don't make sense. They don't match. We're going to work on that, and having, you know, over the years, these small group sessions have seemed to work the best. So we'll be doing that within the next couple of weeks. We set it up with the administration at that point. All right, see no questions? Mr. Moffett revisions the agenda.
Yes, we have a few tonight. Under T Emergent Human Resources, we're going to add number 13, Approval of Return From Administrative Leave. That action reads, "Reserve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent approves for the 2023-2024 school year the file on return from administrative leave." Number one is ID number 9406, Wayne Valley, dated return March 8, 2024 for administrative. And under X Emergent, School Resource Legal, X number one, Approval of Sidebar Agreement. That reads as follows, "Reserve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent approves a sidebar agreement dated March 7, 2024 between the Wayne Township Administrators Association and the Board of Education regarding one-time payment of stipends to complete physical education observation assigned to the district Assistant Principal in Charge of Athletics. The Board President and the Board Secretary are authorized to execute the same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." Number two, again, it's X two being added, Approval of Settlement Agreement and General Ease. That reads, "Reserve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent hereby approves the settlement agreement and general ease in the matter of student ID number 9717554951 dated February 27, 2024 as attached by reference and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." And lastly, X number three, Approval of Last Chance Agreement with Employee ID number 9406. That reads as follows, "Reserve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent hereby approves the last chance agreement in the matter of employee number 9406 dated March 6, 2024 as attached by reference and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." And that concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano, Mr. Battershit. Mrs. Potap, good evening. Aren't we just here?
Good evening. Yes. Suzanne Potap, 23, Tuxedo Drive. There's an item in the agenda regarding the Preakness Early Childhood Center. And then there's also another page that talks about before and after care in the elementary I'm wondering if there's any before and after care available at the Early Childhood Center because I have been asked by someone whose child may qualify for the Early Childhood Center, what does she do if her work schedule does not allow her to be there to pick up her child at the end of his or her session? So I'm just throwing that out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who needs to speak on an agenda item? Mr. Battershit? Mr. Giordano? Do I have a mover for the agenda?
I'd like to move the agenda in total, please.
Mr. Giordano? Mr. Battershit? Any discussion on the agenda? See none? We'll call Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Winting?
Yes.
Mr. Battershit?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes, and I'll abstain on T1.
Motion carries.
Okay. This portion- Okay. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comments on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano?
Sir.
Mr. Battershaw. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, board members. Well, I'm here to speak to you all about the pay raises that you've all given to yourself, and I was wondering if it was retroactive. Okay. Well, here we are.
Sir, can you state your name?
I'm sorry. Sean Duffy, Toll Oaks Driveway in New Jersey. Well, here we are. I know I speak for myself and former board members Kathy and Susan, and I believe for the majority of the current board, of our current board members and our administration, when I say this referendum is not just necessary, but crucial to the future of our school district. I've lived in Wayne for 13 years. My wife has been here for 30, well, I'll get in trouble if I say how long, but she's been here for all her life. And now we have three children. Three children that have been blessed with each one of the teachers that have taught them, and another 13 years to go in the Wayne education system that my children will benefit from. I could not imagine being in a better school district to live in, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight to encourage all parents who have students in the Wayne School District, not just to vote yes on March 12th, but I encourage you to talk to your neighbors, your family members, your friends, the person standing behind you at the grocery store. Encourage, excuse me, anyone who lives in this district. Well, yes, this might be a steep price tag, but ensures the future of not just our schools and their maintenance, but the solid education that the children will benefit from. And at this current time, we have schools that when it leaks, when it rains, it leaks. I know that if I have a water leak in my house and I'm in the middle of cooking dinner, dinner stops till I fix it. It's a distraction. And it's the same for our children. Our children don't learn when they're distracted. They have to be moved from a classroom due to a leak or no heat or excessive heat. And if the person that you're talking to doesn't have children in the district, they remind them of their property values and how that will be affected when the school district ratings plummet because of deplorable infrastructure that has caused our school closures, redistricting, and the loss of our teachers due to being poached by other districts that weren't afraid to invest in their school district. Once again, I'll state that I was on this board when the initial projects came in, and this fiscal board, past and present, looked at what was necessary and what was a wish list, and we pared it down to its current state. Many numbers have been thrown around this town. What is the tax impugn on my property? Ask the mayor, he'll give you a number. Ask Dr. Toback, he'll give you the right number. But for me, there's no price tag I put on my children or their education. That being said, I hope you all agree with me. Enjoy me voting yes on March 12th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kathy Kazan, 6 Stratton Drive. I attended the council meeting last night because I thought it was important to speak to our mayor about his recent behavior in our community. The mark of a good leader is someone who brings communities together, not divides them. He's done an excellent job of dividing our community with misinformation, last-minute shenanigans, ambushes, videos, et cetera. I made my points about that last night. But the point I want to make this evening is to ask the parents to forget what the mayor has to say, because he's shown you he couldn't care less about the working conditions of our teachers or the safety of the fields, et cetera, for our students. I ran for the board 12 years ago because I lost my first race and then four more elections after that. And the reason I ran for the board was because of the excellent education my son received here. He received a full free ride to undergrad and a full free ride to law school because he had his foundation from an excellent school system here. And I've always felt the need to pay that forward. And I think you all should do the same. Continue to push for this referendum. Tell everyone who will listen that this is an excellent school district, but only if we keep up the good work and maintain it and make sure that our schools are excellent, that make sure our teachers are well cared for, that make sure we hire the right people. Do your job. I'll continue to do mine regardless. I'm a private citizen now, but I still care deeply about the students in the school district. And I hope everyone gets out on March 12th and votes yes. Don't let the mayor tell you what to do. You make an informed decision, and you've gotten all that information from that man over there who's telling the truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Suzanne Potup, 23 Tuxedo Drive, Wayne. I'm sorry I missed last week's meeting. Congratulations to our staff members who received the Governor's Teachers Award. Nothing makes me happier than honoring our students and our staff members. I'm not going to chastise anyone for an omelet station. That's not why I'm here tonight, unless you flew in Gordon Ramsay to do the omelets. I'm sure that it was Mike Schmidt and his terrific team from Sidexo. I want to thank the board members, especially for their support of the referendum, and especially to those of you who spoke out at the council meeting last night. My favorite line from the last board meeting was Mr. Faber's. The term he used was unequivocal support regarding the referendum. And I think that's where all of you are. That's certainly where I am and the two previous speakers, our administration, our teachers. And I'm really hoping the community at large feels that way also. Mr. Pavlak, you always do your homework and have valuable statistics at your fingertips. Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Resmer, who asked last week if the mayor had asked for a sit-down. No. About three and a half years ago, the mayor gave us the information about all the new housing developments that were coming in and told the school district to get prepared, basically. Well, you have been getting prepared. We've been, we, the previous boards have been getting prepared, which resulted in this referendum. So we've been doing the homework, the requirement, and it hurts me to the core that we have not gotten support from the municipal side. Save for Ms. Ritter. Thank you. I want to thank the seniors who spoke last night at the town council meeting in favor of the referendum. Mr. Freeswick and Mr. Molner, they said, after all, it's our future. It's our children. I'm going to piggyback on some of the business statistics from Mr. Prisakos and Mr. Pavlak. In addition to commercial properties mentioned last few meetings, Willowbrook, FedEx, Gucci, Crossroads Apartments, et cetera, look around. We have Whole Foods. When Trader Joe's decided they needed a bigger store, they made a bigger store with a whole new shopping center around it. There's a CarMax in Owawa. We have an expanded ShopRite. But building is going on at the old ShopRite. And a Manello project is going in across from the main post office. I'm sorry that Preakness is a ghost town. Oh, but wait, they're getting 256 apartments because it's going to become a mixed-use complex. And there are also four new daycare centers in town. All these businesses do their homework. They do their demographics. It tells you that they're willing to invest in our town. And I believe that our citizens, our voters, should be interested in investing in our town also by supporting the school referendum. I want to mention our Class III officers. When the safety and security initiatives did not pass, one of the ways that the school district decided to keep our students as safe as possible was hiring Class III officers in every school. That comes in at about half a million dollars a year. It's probably a little higher now. And they have really become an asset to all our schools in the district. So thank you. We've already had a new influx of new students. Classes are full, especially on the elementary level. Seniors like me in my neighborhood are being replaced by people that move in with children. I have, there are two children moving in across the street from me. They retired to Florida. Good for them. Another phenomenon, though, is adding to the student population. We have multi-generational families. We have parents whose grown children have moved in with their kids, whether it's through divorce, or maybe they need to save more so they can buy their own home. And I know three or four families in close proximity to me that have their grandchildren living at their home. We don't turn them down. Their name might not be on the lease, but they're still living in Wayne, and we educate those children, too. So in all, I want to say thank you very much. I want to wish you Happy Read Across America Month, and next week is a Happy St. Patrick's Day to all of you. And I would like you to vote yes for the referendum on the 12th and make it a very, very happy March. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Seeing no one else. I move to close.
Mr. Giordano, Mr. Battershaw. Dr. Toback, any comments?
Just very quickly, a response to Mrs. Potup, who asked about after care for the Early Childhood Center and before care. So we are working on a contract for some services for the upcoming school year. So we're in the mid-stages of the process. So we should have something for the board later this spring.
Okay. Any old business, new business, board member comments? For board member comments, now I'm going to start at the end to my right this week. Next week will be to the left, and we'll go down, and then Mr. Prisakos and I will finish. Mrs. Lamandry.
Hi. Good evening. I just wanted to say I think it's terrific, the 38% decrease in the HIV investigations and all of the work that went into putting the presentation together. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rigoloso?
So I just want to say real quick, the future belongs to those who prepare for it today. I can't tell you how to vote, but I can assure you that the Wayne Board of Education has your children's best interest at all times. With over 3,000 units, whether we believe it's 100 extra kids, 150 extra kids, 300 extra kids, it's still extra students. We have to prepare. We all have to prepare. Our schools need repairs and preparation for what lies ahead. The investment in education is never, ever wasted. Our teachers are the key to success. However, teachers need a safe environment and good working conditions. So please, vote on March 12th. It's for the children, and it's for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wintick?
So I was happy or had the pleasure to participate at Randall Carter in the Read Across America program this week. So that was a lot of fun. My next point is for the referendum, the projects, as it has been mentioned many times, there are 62 projects, and they are our must-have, not want-have. So we will have to get it done one way or another. With the referendum, there should be minimal disruptions to the teachers and the students, but if we don't have the funding, we will have to move things around, make cuts, and be very creative on how to get those things done. And that's the problem. That's what I worry about the most. So what price are we willing to pay for the future of our children? I think, you know, what will the education look like if we don't have enough funding and we have to make those cuts? Whatever program it is, we haven't gone that far in that way, but that's where we will have to have conversations about. So please vote. It is for the future of our children, and I hope to see you at the polling locations on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
Thank you. Last week, I was acknowledging a teacher and kind of got emotionally caught up in it, and was remiss to say that, yes, I do naturally support the referendum. I was the only one that looked back and said, oop, I forgot to say that one. I want to get that on record. I do support it. To the man who swore me in the first time I was on this board, I only have one question for you, and the gentleman's office is down the hallway. Why? Why did you do this? That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Thank you. I would like to address a couple pieces of the referendum and some of the information that's been put out there. On the Willowbrook Mall tax increase, I feel like that's being put out there, pushing on people that prices are going to go up when their rent goes up, kind of scaring people into more money that they're going to pay. But if you look at Willowbrook Mall, the majority of the highest-paying renters in that mall are national chains, right? National chains have established pricing. You don't pay more for an Apple computer on Fifth Avenue in New York than you do in Willowbrook Mall. You don't pay more for a pair of jeans at Macy's in Herald Square than you do at Willowbrook Mall. So when their rent goes up, their prices are not going up. They're not adjusting national pricing because of Willowbrook Mall's rent. So, you know, be sure that they understand tax increases and rent increases are part of business. That is not going to trickle down to the shoppers in the mall. If anything, the new units that are coming into town are only going to increase their revenues by people going there to shop. It was nice to see the mayor last night acknowledge the need for a new school at Preakness. However, I don't understand how we can go to a $100 million referendum and build a $47 million school. That's a lot of cuts that we then have to make from our needs. And the biggest piece then of that budget is not backed by state aid. So we're giving up a lot of state aid to cut a lot of needed projects. As everybody has said, there are no wants here. These are all needs. We talk a lot about maintenance, and I think a lot of the public gets upset that we haven't been maintaining our schools over these years. The maintenance we're doing now is more of refurbishment than maintenance. We haven't neglected the buildings and now have to make up on that maintenance. The mayor talked about fire trucks and not buying 20 fire trucks in the same year, having to replace them in the same year. None of us were here when these schools were built. They were built around the same time. A lot of us weren't even alive. So we're in the position now where we have to take care of them. We didn't plan for them all to be the same age and need the repairs all at the same time, but it's our responsibility and our duty to do it. I think that's it. Please get out and vote. Everybody do your homework. Couple days left, but get out and hear your voice.
Mr. Paul, you saying I'm old? Because I remember when they built the schools.
So I like to think about things in a simple way because I'm really a pretty simple guy. And I think about when my wife and I bought our house in Wayne. And for the amount of money that we spent on our house, there were a lot of towns where we could have gotten a much bigger house. But that wasn't what was important to us. What was important to us was the education system for our children. And you make the choice, in a lot of cases, of what's best for your child versus some of the things that may be material. And, you know, there are sacrifices that could come along with that when you do that for your children. So I question situations where people are trying to come to Wayne that may not be able to afford a home, but they have children. And they really, really want the educational system. And maybe they have three children, but they can't afford to buy a home. They may not be able to afford a three-bedroom apartment, but maybe they can afford a two-bedroom apartment. So what do they do? They throw in some bunk beds into the bedroom, and maybe instead of having, you know, one child in a two-bedroom apartment, you end up with three children coming out of a two-bedroom apartment. The reason why I say this is because there's arguments going back and forth about the number of units being used to create the basis of what the, you know, the outcome is going to be, or how many children are going to be coming. Nobody has a crystal ball. But what I will say is that the demand to try to come to Wayne is so high that people may be willing to settle for something smaller and try to get more people into a unit than some of us might, you know, have been willing to do, to benefit their children and get them into our educational system. So while we're arguing over, you know, 50 students or 100 students... So, while we're arguing over, you know, 50 students or 100 students or 200 students, it really doesn't matter what you see in your demographic studies, in my opinion, because time is going to tell what's going to happen. And we all know that there are going to be more children coming. So, either you could prepare for it and the worst-case scenario is you're going to be over-prepared, which will keep us in, you know, with a little extra room maybe for a longer period of time. But what we can't afford to do is be under-prepared. We can't afford not to have the space to put these children because if the influx is greater than what we've anticipated, that creates a much more difficult situation. We're going to have to bring in trailers to have children or put up tents. I mean, talk about discomfort. If you're outside in a tent, I mean, that's really not going to be great in the wintertime. So, I just want people to think that, you know, about a lot of the things that you're hearing aren't necessarily factual. Nobody really knows what the future is going to bring. But all we need, all we can do is try to prepare for what is going to be best for the town, best for our kids. And like I said, worst cases, we're a little bit over-prepared, but I don't think I've ever heard too many people complaining about being in a better position than they thought they were going to be in. You're only going to hear people complain if it turns out to be worse. So, you know, I appreciate everybody that came to speak on behalf of the referendum, both last night and tonight. And please get out and vote on the 12th. Thank you.
Mr. Batters?
So, first of all, I want to just say that, staying away from the referendum to start with, I got to go to James Fallon's treps. I always find those treps awesome. I think people should go and experience some of those things more. And apart from anything else, it gets you into school systems where you can see for yourself what the school systems are like. So, good job in keeping the treps up and running and going and do more of that because they're fantastic to get the kids really pushing their entrepreneurial spirit early. In addition to that, I really want to, like, think about what we're getting out of that profile of a graduate, right? I think the profile of a graduate really starts to aim us towards looking at what our students get out of being in Wayne. I'm really interested to see what we get out of the projects at each level and hopefully that shows something to the individual students where they can see how they've grown themselves as well over time. But like, that kind of educational support that we get for people working through Wayne, that's what Wayne is. As far as the referendum, I think there has been more than enough information that everybody has. You know where to find the information. The thing I need you all to take away is go and vote on the 12th. Get out there, vote. We really need the community to tell us where their support is. Thank you.
Mr. Prasakos?
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank the Wayne Hills SDA. My wife and I attended and it was a great performance. And I also heard a unique variation to my name when they announced it on Friday. So, that was pretty cool. Also, I wanted to congratulate the two Wayne Hills wrestlers and the Wayne Valley wrestler that made it to states, also the track and field folks that made it to states for both high schools, and of course, our musicians that do a great job. I know there's a lot of plays going on these days as well, so I hope to attend some of those. I wanted to say that that was a good summary on the referendum by Dr. Toback earlier. So, if somebody missed it, please go back on YouTube tomorrow and listen to it. I know we live in the on-demand and information overload world. Everybody wants to know, you know, the answer right away. So, you know, we've been fielding questions, we've been getting questions, but 100% of the questions are on our website. We have podcasts. We have a YouTube channel. At this point, as of this afternoon, if someone posts on social media and says, "I reached out to the Board of Ed and nobody got back to me," you know, "I can't believe this," that's fake news because, you know, all the questions have been answered so far. And if they haven't been answered thus far and there's new questions, there's plenty of sources where you can get the information. So, I'm as pro-business as anyone in this town. You know, the businesses in this town are going to gain from the influx of apartments and the influx of people coming in. But I'm more pro-education and more pro-community. So, please go out and vote on Tuesday, March 12th.
Thank you. Excuse me. It's been a rough three weeks. It's been a rough three weeks and as Mrs. Kazan said, the division that has been driven through this town is as wide as the aisle in front of me, if not wider. We talk about numbers, we talk about demographic studies, and that's exactly what they are. They're studies. And we have to use the best information we have available to provide to the statistician to help guide us. Our most recent demographic study is a couple weeks ago. But we can get into numbers and everything else. But the issue is that we are seeing some real, live things happening in our schools with population before our eyes, that no demographer is ever going to be able to pick up in a study. And it was alluded to by other board members. We are seeing extended families move into town. And how do we know it? Because one of our schools is at the breaking point right now because we're seeing it as the parents register their children. And it's also happening in other schools as well. No demographer is ever going to tell you that. Before coming to the council meeting last night, I had dinner with a realtor and I asked him. I said, "How many houses are for sale in Wayne now, today?" He goes, "About 30, maybe, maybe even less." Because as quick as they come on, we can't even show them and they're gone. I said to him, I said, "Can't tell me what the people are who are moving in?" He goes, "They're all families." And the first question I get is about the schools. How good are the schools? And he's a product of our school system. So, he knows. So, as I was contemplating what I was going to say tonight, I had a lot of emotion and I began to think. And the words of a great American educator and philosopher, John Dewey, came to my mind. He said, "Education is a preparation for life and education is life itself." These words resonated with me. And they gave to me the vision of this, that this community has had for years. We understand, education is the cornerstone by which society is built. With this in mind, I stand here before you tonight and I entrust you with the solemn duty of advocating for the future of our educational institution and, most importantly, the welfare of our teachers and students. At the heart of our discussion today lies the pressing matter of the upcoming referendum. We have unprecedented growth. The mayor laid out last night, he goes, yes, the second Avalon Bay on Valley Road. He talked about the GAF property that's getting ready to go shovel in the ground. He talked about the Rockledge Garden Center property. If you think Avalon Bay on Valley Road is big, check out that piece of property. Preakness Shopping Center, the realtor I had dinner with me last night said, "You can't get more than a 60-day lease in the Preakness Shopping Center because they're redeveloping it." I don't think they're putting stores in it because they couldn't survive with stores in it now. So, what are they going to do? They're going to put up more housing. It's coming. Everybody knows it. And we could argue all over and over, you know, should the town have, you know, sued developers and this and that? That's not the point. The bottom line is, we are going to be getting a lot of children. And guess what? It was a rare occasion that I agreed with the mayor last night when he said that. And when he said, "You need a new school." Wow. Unfortunately, we have one means of doing that. And that means going out to referendum. I don't even want to think about building a new school because this bottom referendum would look like chum change compared to building a new school. We have to be proactive in what we do. We have to stay ahead of the curve. We have to ensure that we can preserve the hallmark of our small class sizes. That's how children learn. Read all the studies you want. Small class sizes, increased learning. I didn't go to school for three years for a master's degree in education to figure that out. It's obvious. When I was in elementary school a long time ago, when some of the schools were being built, we had 36 kids in our class. You were lucky you could walk up and down the aisles between the desks. So, as Mr. Faber eloquently said last night at the council meeting, what do we want our legacy to be in this town? Do we want our legacy to be, yes, we're a forward-thinking people? Yes, we are going to invest in our schools? Or, well, look what they could have done. And that's why we are where we are now. Now more than ever, it's time to unite and support this referendum, the critical work that lies ahead for our educational institutions. Our schools are not just buildings. They are the very essence of our community. They are the incubators of knowledge, the laboratories of innovation, and the crucibles of character development. By investing in our schools, we are investing in future leaders, thinkers, creators, those who shape the destiny of society, those who will be replacing us up here and in government as well. Let's heed our call to duty tonight and safeguard the promises of a brighter tomorrow for generations to come. Please, go out and support the referendum. People could have their opinions and I've heard a lot of opinions on both sides. That's fine. And I respect everybody's opinion. But when you go to the lengths of trying to tear a community apart and bring up a breakfast and then make a comment on taxpayers paying for it, come on. How about the breakfast the town has every year for the businesses in the community? Who's paying for that? Not our administrators who paid for the breakfast. So, I'm leaving it at that. I could go on and on, but I ask you, please, your support is vital in keeping this district in pace with what needs to be done in the future. I thank you all. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion.